Did start the recording. Should have Bill and Don Wartella's coming in. Don, we're, yep, there's Don.
Good evening.
And Bill Cox, are you that you're on?
Yes.
Okay, Bill's on. Still have. Still have Chris Newman and Rick Manchester.
Jim, I was assuming you're gonna share yours. With the agenda, just so I can, because I'm without.
Yeah.
Blind, blind here a little bit.
Yeah, let me. Call that up here a second. I will need to, let me see.
All right.
And we have Merrick 22. Can I ask? The name of the person? We're just making sure if that's Rick Manchester, Chris Newman, it's logged as Merrick 22.
That's me.
Who would, who would maybe? Who is it?
This is Rick Manchester.
All right, no problem, we'll get your name changed.
Thanks.
All right. So we do, coming up on seven o'clock, we are. Bobby Dirk is coming in now. And. Kyle, just be aware that Matt's on his phone, so if we lose connection, the meeting will defer to you leading it.
Sure.
Yeah, Matt, are you there?
Yep.
All right. I will.
Do you want to get started?
We'll bring up at least the. Just checking to make sure. Can you see that shared screen?
I, I can, I'm gonna be more high maintenance here, can you zoom in, so just a single page is shown?
Oh boy.
Oh boy. There you go. Great.
And this is, obviously, I think this is. September 14. All right, anytime you wanna. Start, Mr. Shankle, I do have two minutes after seven.
Yeah, let's go ahead and get started, I'll call the. October 12th Planning Commission to order. Secretary DeBolt, could you perform a roll call for us, please?
I'll. Well, John, you're, you're muted. There you go, John.
Okay. Shankle?
Here.
Manchester?
Well.
Make sure your microphones are unmuted.
Rick? Unmute yourself, please.
Here.
Hunt? Here. Cox?
Here.
Newman? No. Newman, no.
No, no Newman.
Mutia?
Present.
Wartella?
Present.
Frisbee?
Present.
Okay.
All right.
That everyone's. Thank you.
Other than.
Okay, if he joins, we can get, get note of that. Before, before we jump in, we've got a note from Village Manager Mallory here quickly, Jim.
Yeah, I just wanted the Planning Commission to be aware that. We are holding this meeting via Zoom, and certainly have announced it and publicized it, and there's actually citizens participating in it. And Mr. Newman's, I just clicked him to enter as well, so the record can reflect that he is joining the meeting at 7:04. The Supreme Court did rule last week on the governor's executive orders. There was another ruling late this afternoon that was published that did. Not extend the executive orders. They have sought legal counsel as well as been in communication with our state senator and state representative. I did make the decision, since this information came in about two hours ago, to continue to hold the meeting. There is an appellate court decision from 1985, none of us are attorneys on here, but I want to just. Put the thought process of why the decision was made to hold the meeting in a, in a safe manner. With a worldwide pandemic going on. We're going to monitor this, both our senator and state rep believe the legislation will have. Appropriate. Proposal to the governor, hopefully tomorrow, but by the end of the week, certainly. If it is determined, which will come this week, we do have two very minor. Actions that the Planning Commission will take tonight on facade grants. And if by the end of the week, we do have concerns, we will simply. Put those on the November agenda as well. We do, like I said, feel we are in a good standing tonight. But if the legislation and governor can't seem to work together and understand how small municipalities work and depend on leadership. We're going to end up having to meet back in person, but it's my hope that. We'll get the leadership that the people desire and. It clear up some of this confusion, so just wanted to provide everyone with my thought process, there probably will be. Some news made of the ruling. But our. Attorneys from Miller Canfield were in contact with me, and it's hot off the press, if you will, so we've made the decision on the Plan Commission to move forward tonight. And we will continue monitoring as this goes through this week in what is best in the council meeting for next Monday, so. And maybe at the end of the meeting, if people have questions, I, I can attempt to answer it, but.
I, I, thank you for that.
I have a point of order with Chairman Shankle, if I could.
Okay.
Or, can I go ahead? This is Wartella. Yes?
Chairman Shankle, are, are you there, or did your phone freeze up? We'll go ahead and.
There, there's. Do you want to discuss? Okay. I, I'm here, can you hear me?
We can now, Mr. Wartella had a point of order.
I, I'm wondering, the. The agenda, we, we don't have a, a, agenda item on here to approve the agenda. That turned up in the last meeting minutes, is that something that we need to do every? Every agenda for every meeting, we do have, do we have to have a, an approval of the agenda?
Yeah, thanks for asking that, Don, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Village Manager Mallory to comment on that, we did have some discussion afterwards, and I'm gonna let him answer that.
Yeah, that's a good recommendation by Mr. Wartella, and we'll just add it in as to a approval of the agenda.
Thank you.
Jim, maybe just some context, I, I think that's. A relatively new practice, it's a. Remember Wartella's point, so any context behind that?
If I may, if I may speak for a minute, this is Member Newman.
Go ahead, Chris, thank you.
We have, up, up until the, they did an agenda approval at the prior meeting, have never in. My 12 years on the Planning Commission, or anytime prior, had a specific line item on the agenda. Because with the nature of the Planning Commission, the agenda should be set before the meeting goes. There should be no additions or corrections or changes as the meeting goes on, unlike a council meeting where you may have some last minute additions. Or corrections, or some sort of change. The nature of the Planning Commission and with the policies set in place should allow for. Plenty of time to have the agenda set without need for changes and subsequent approval at the meeting. That's how it has been in the past, if that is deemed necessary to change at this point. That's, that may be a, a good plan to do, but just speaking to prior. You know, prior practice, those have been the reasons up until now, we have not, have not had that line item, because the agenda, by our nature, is supposed to be. Set once, before the meeting starts.
Thank you. Thanks, Member Newman.
The, the only thing that, that potentially. Could be, in addition to the agenda, is due to the fact that we conduct the business of the DDA. Which is, is new from a historical perspective. On the approval of the agenda, where it would be placed. You know, it's at the wishes of, of the, of the board, if you want it as an. An item on the agenda, we certainly can put it, I'm not, Chris might help me out if there's a negative to having it there. As I, I, I see the only, the additions. Be coming in the area of the DDA.
Oh, I don't, again, Member Newman, I, I don't, I don't see, I, I can't foresee any issues with it. One thing that I have noticed that has given me some cause for concern reviewing. Things since we have combined both bodies is we have yet to separate business. Between the DDA and the Planning Commission, once we break as the Planning Commission, or we go to approve DDA expenditures. Was my understanding that we need to close the Planning Commission meeting and open as the DDA, because we are two separate bodies, even though we're operating under one group of people.
Gentlemen, I'm, gentlemen, I'm gonna jump in here, we're, we're way off our, our current agenda, so what I'd like to recommend is. You know, thanking both Member Newman and Member Wartella for their comments. I will take into consideration with staff and provide some recommendations at the next meeting on how we'll move forward with approval of agenda as a line item, and. And then also to Member Newman's point, discussing the separation of the two meetings for agenda items. I just want to, in the essence of, of time and staying on our current agenda, I want to get us back on track, so. With that being said, we'll move on to the third item on our agenda here, which is the approval of the September 14th meeting minutes. I'm assuming everyone's had time to review those minutes, are there any questions, comments, any additions that would be made?
Member Newman here, I never received those minutes.
They would have been emailed out today. Trying to think of the time.
The email that I have from, from the village was at 12:14 PM was the updated info for MCM.
Now, it would have come, I think, within the half, 30 minutes of that.
That's the last thing I have.
Did, did others receive the minutes?
This is Wartella, I received mine.
Manchester, I received mine.
I received mine.
I received mine.
Oh shoot, if Bill Hunt got his, I must have done, run something wrong.
No, I, I'm looking at my, at my inbox currently, and I do not, I do not have those.
This is DeBolt, I, I did not receive today's minutes.
John, you, you have them right next to your computer.
Right, I have it now.
But they were emailed to you as well, I had a hard copy here for you.
So we have a, we have agenda item to approve the minutes, is, is there anyone willing to make a motion to approve the minutes, or? Table this for, for our next meeting?
Wartella, I would move that the September 14th, 2020. Meeting minutes be approved as submitted.
And Frisbee, second.
I have a motion from Wartella, Frisbee, a second. Member DeBolt, if you could do a roll call for us?
Shankle?
Yes.
Manchester?
Yes.
Hunt? Yes. Cox?
Yes.
Newman?
No.
Mutia?
Abstaining.
What's that?
I'm abstaining, I'm not voting on that one.
Abstaining?
Abstaining.
Wartella?
Yes.
And Frisbee?
Yes.
DeBolt, yes. It's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven, it passed seven to two on the, on the minutes.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number four, we have Downtown Development Authority, and looks like we're kicking this over to Manager Mallory and Alex Lee.
Um, well, really, we're gonna, John DeBolt led the subcommittee with Don Wartella and Bill Cox, and he has. The proposed new language to the facade grant policy, and then at least two facade loan requests. I think he has a discussion on a third one, so it's Member DeBolt's.
With, taking. The responsibility with the planning, or with the Downtown Developing Authority. The current wording, I did email all of those current email wordings to. Everyone here at, on the Planning Commission. I hope everybody got it. But the original current wording on the installation or improvement of permanent signage. Also signage must be a permanent installed feature of the facade and may not be portable or removable. What we would like to propose is installation of improvement or permanently installed signage. Signage can be permanently installed feature of the facade or site. Site signages, site signage includes electric message boards. Pylon signs or monument signs, directional or wayfides, wayfinding signage are excluded. The reason that we wanted to expand this is to add additional. Improvements to the property. Of the businesses. To accommodate signage off the building. That would be my, or our committee that met between Mr. Cox and Mr. Hunt, all agreed that. Present this to the board. Did everyone get a copy of that?
Yes.
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 Is that something that? That we need to vote on, Jim?
Yes, I would have the chair take a motion on the support of incorporating that language, along with support and then discussion.
I will call for a motion.
I would motion it myself.
I'll second.
Who's adding second?
Cox.
So Jim, do we need to, we don't need?
With, with your permission, Chairman Shankle, I'd like to offer the board.
To vote before we discuss, right?
Correct, well, we discuss.
Discuss and then vote.
Yep. Is there any? Students for the DDA Subcommittee?
Well, this is Frisbee, if I may. I see the wording changes, I understand the wording changes, but how do you think that'll benefit the downtown businesses?
How it benefits them are availability to use the funds other than right on the facade, it's part of the expansion that we've talked about. With this program to get more involvement.
We were pretty specific about permanently installed features. Now we're looking at electronic message boards, can the portable boards, immovable ones like this, the ones you can put on the back of a trailer and?
No, it's, it states right in there that it. The signage can be a permanently installed feature of the facade or site, it has to be a permanently installed feature of the site as well.
Well, there we, we've changed our language from signage must be a permanent to signage can be a permanent, if I read can be, that's not telling me it has to be. So, so.
wording, then we can change that wording to must. Is what.
Must, must or shall.
How about, this is Wartella, how about change that to signage can be either. A permanent installed feature on the facade or site?
Nope, you cannot have an either or.
Right.
No mobile signs.
From, from the group, the subgroup, I mean, that and your intention, your desire to have mobile sign or that type?
No.
No, 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 we. We did not intend on any mobile signage.
Mobile signs are in violation of the sign ordinance, anyway.
So I would just, then the, the second sentence on a rewording, and signage can be, it just, as it says before, signage must be a permanently installed feature of the facade or site.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I think it, I, I, I believe it was just a wording exchange when he, when he made out the new. When, when we made out the new. Proposed wording.
Yeah, no, I, I understand it, I just. Think it could be taken advantage of if we.
Sure, sure, it's appropriate change.
That was all for me, thank you.
Any other discussion for the DDA Subcommittee? Hearing none, I will ask Member DeBolt to do a roll call vote.
Shankle?
Yes.
Manchester?
Yes.
DeBolt, yes. Hunt?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Mutia?
Yes.
Wartella?
Yes.
And Frisbee?
Yes.
Okay. Review of the second, or the two facade loan requests. In your packet, you did see that the packets have the requests in there. This week, we have had a third pa, a third. Loan request of a business on Washington Street that installed their signage. On the wall in September of, they opened September 24th, I believe. Which I emailed all of you that. Grant request. It's something we can do a little discussion on. Trying to remember the name of it.
At the Mazani Play Cafe?
Yes.
Mazani.
Mazani. So the first one is Vickers, as you can see in the grant, they're gonna do it in two phases, the first phase is repairing. The sign, the pylon sign, and fixing that and installing. The boards on each side of it. Again, it's all in your packet. Luckily, it's fifty, almost $6,000. To fix that, and this is something, I guess, I mean, they need to ask Chris Newman, I'm assuming that we would do an approval of this. As long as they have the electrical permit to do the job.
They need, not only do they need an electrical permit. That sign is significantly bigger than the one that is there, they need a sign permit from the village as well.
They're using the same can, Chris.
No, their sign that they're putting up is eight feet long, the one that's there is only six.
The sign itself on the.
The sign itself is significantly larger. So the other issue is if that sign, they, regardless, if you change a sign, you still need a permit from the village.
And I believe they have submitted a permit to the village for that.
Until they have the, until the permit's been approved, if that sign in any way, shape, or form hangs over the sidewalk, they can't do it. But the, so the other thing is, is approving, I'm, I'm guessing, are they asking for just phase one money?
Right, at this time, they're just doing phase one. Right, at this time, they're just doing phase one.
And that's, so that's just the, the, the pylon sign?
The pylon sign and the installation of it.
Okay, that doesn't, then that doesn't go to the one that they're gonna do on the south wall of the building as well.
That is in phase two.
Okay, and then when does the, the the changeable copy giant sign, when is that?
The, excuse me?
The, the other big sign that they want to put on the pylon out front.
That would be with phase two also.
Okay, that's, yeah, again, that's gonna be a separate permit and that's gonna cause issues. But they do, they do need a permit to do that. If they have the permit, then, you know, well, they'd have to have the sign permit, they'd have to have the electrical permit, all that in place. Obviously, before they can do any work. And there's no reason, and I, I don't believe there's any reason we can't make our approval contingent on those, although in the past, we have had enforcement issues following, following up on completion, so.
Well, we'll make.
Yeah. They filed, we, we had email communication with the owners of Vicberg indicating, we're talking about the phase two, the sign closest to the road. And that communication detailed that currently there was no setback information on the plan. And it was our, it would be our understanding. The existing sign meets the applicable two foot setback already from the road front property line. We informed them sign permit would be required due to the scope of work described in the sign plan. And that they would need a permit, so that's all been communicated to them. I anticipate that the owners of Vickers will have that completed prior to, to the next time the planning commission convey, so if, if it's the desire of the planning commission to, to approve it based on staff's approval of the sign, that's at the whim of the board.
Member Newman, again, I would I guess, since the sign permit is approved by the village manager, that it doesn't have any direct impact on what this body as the DDA approving grant funding. It, to me, makes more sense to approve a grant application for a sign that is permitted and ready to go rather than doing it the other way around. That's my, that's, that's my take on it at this point. I will defer to, to Chair Schenkel as to how he chooses to proceed with this.
Any other discussion for the DDA subcommittee? So I think what I'm here. Sorry, what, what, what I'm hearing is that there's two phases. And as we just discussed, it doesn't matter what phase that they're in, we're really approving an application for a facade grant. We're not approving, you know, any type of sign application, so. So member Newman, will you restate what you, what you, you just said, please?
Yes, currently they're requesting grant funding for a sign that they don't have a permit for. And so they, you know, the, the permit hasn't been filed, it hasn't been reviewed, it's been communicated that they need one.
What, what permit are you talking about, Chris? Are you talking about the electrical permit or the one out of my office?
Both.
They, they, well, so I clarify, what they have submitted the application to me. The only thing, and, and I anticipate, given it a formal approval, the, the
Okay, I was, I was unclear on that, though. My understanding when you stated it before was you had communicated to them that they needed to to fill out a permit request for village approval.
Yes, it might, and my, the confusion is on my part, I caused it. When I keep hearing of the word permit, I, I'm, the electrical and I don't know if the planning commission isn't as aware, but we have a new company overseeing that. So I've probably caused this confusion, but if we're talking about the permit out of my office, I, that, that is, I'm just waiting to make sure that they follow the steps on the electrical, but I don't anticipate a problem with that.
Well, with this, with this grant, I guess, what, what I'm asking of the board from what the, what the what the facade grant committee is to approve their grant request with the proper permits. Was there any more discussion?
So, the, the way I'm understanding. I don't, I don't know if you just heard me or not, John, sorry. Okay. So are you, you're looking for a recommendation or a vote of approval on this?
The recommendation from this board?
We're looking for a vote of approval, so, so the facade grant can be executed. For purposes, and I apologize for the confusion, the, the, the permit application to the village manager is good to go. I think what the, what we want to make sure in the village, and I will make sure is any permits reference the electrical are, are obtained before any of the governmental money is reimbursed. This is, remember, this permit or this grant process, the business owner pays the full freight, gets, gets their improvements to the building done, submits all the information, including the receipts for the work performed, and then we reimburse up to the money.
This, this is, excuse me, this is where tell, so this facade grant is for up to twenty five hundred dollars, correct? Or for twenty five hundred dollars?
Correct.
And that's just for phase one?
It's just this year's phase one that they're doing. If they have, if, if they do the other work in the same year, there would be no more money granted to them. If they apply with this in the next year and it's a different signage, then it would be a different grant. Is that correct, Mr. Mallory?
Yep.
Any other questions for the DDA subcommittee regarding Vickers facade loan request?
I, I think it's a learning opportunity, Chair Schenkel. This has been done in the past. I mean, we've had grant facades approved by the DDA board in which the businesses never did the work and therefore staff insured reimbursement money was never given to the company.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you. All right, I will call for a motion regarding Vickers' request for their facade loan approval.
This is where tell, I would move that the facade grant request from Vickers Lakeside Tavern be approved for up to two thousand five hundred dollars.
Support from Manchester. Member DeBoltz, could you do a roll call for us, please?
Schenkel?
Yes.
Manchester?
Yes.
DeBoltz, yes. Hunt?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Future?
Yes.
Wortella?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
The second facade grant request was from Hideaway. Again, it's in your packet. They're going to finish painting the top part of their building. I'm assuming where they ran out the apartment upstairs, and is that adding a, is that adding a mani, manual? To the visible side? Anyone gonna? Is that what that says on the, on the grant?
That's what I read, I'm not sure that's what he's trying to say.
I don't know what a manial is.
Did you, John, you're the one that, that secured it? He have any conversation with you?
I have not had conversation with Mr. Plankenhorn. I think what before?
We mural. I think that, I think that might be supposed to be mural, M U R. I think.
I think that's correct.
I think it's supposed to be mural.
Rural to the visible side?
Yes.
Okay. I guess this is all we've received from them. As far as who's doing the painting and mural work. Would this board want more information?
Mr. DeBoltz, member Newman, if I may, what has been the process? I thought it was very thorough for Vickers to provide us with the, with the rendering of their proposed signage. What has been for painting or mural type requests? In the past, what has been the protocol? Do they usually provide some sort of rendering or documentation or, you know, qualified party that's performing the work or? I haven't seen this.
We've never had anybody paint a mural. We have had people paint their buildings. We, as the DDA, can recommend the colors. We cannot we, we cannot what's the word I'm trying to say?
Hey, demand?
Demand them to use a certain color. The only place that we do demand those colors are on the paint program. When they buy the paint from the hardware store, there's a palette of colors over there that go from there. So there's never been, we, it's, it's been a recommendation, not a formal stating of saying you have to use this color. As far as doing murals, we've never had murals done on it. But again, if, if this board would like more information before we do approve this one, I would be glad to get it for the next meeting.
Yeah, member, member DeBoltz, this is Chair Schenkel. I, I, I'm not sold that that word is mural and would feel more comfortable with some clarification around exactly what that word is and a little bit more context given to this, this request.
Well, correct, because we'd also need, if it is a professional painting service that's painting it for the cost of four hundred or four thousand dollars, we would need the business that's doing it.
Right.
Because this program does allow you as a business owner to paint it yourself and pay for the product, but we're not going to pay the labor from the, from the owner to do that. Okay? For an example, if I were to paint my building and I were to charge fifteen hundred dollars for to paint my building, we would, the DDA, this grant would not cover that, because I'm not a professional painter or it's not done that. Does that make sense to you?
Yes.
Everyone else?
Yes.
Yep.
It has to be done by a certified licensed person.
You know, I agree totally with that. And, and if I may, I think it was it was Newman or, or you, John, that made the comment, if they go through the purchase of the paint program that control the palette colors, why wouldn't we not want to do the same in this position?
We never have. As again, in the, in the DDA, our by, our bylaws stated that we can request or we could, we, we can not request, we can suggest certain colors, but we cannot we cannot enforce them to use a certain color.
Well, I, I think we can if we're giving grant money, if we don't. You know, it, it just comes right back to the downtown, what do we as a planning commission want it to look like? A control over that from a financial influence standpoint, I think we ought to use it. I'll end it at this, I would like to see something similar presented to us as the Vickers group did with a palette color scheme, here's what we're gonna do. Here's a quote to do it.
Well, we'll, we'll, we will go ahead and secure that tomorrow. I, I think for the group to know what, what you're gonna see presented in November is a significant portion of this investment is finishing the overall painting of the top of the building. That'll be the significant portion of this cost. Within that painting of the top of the building, they're proposing, call it a mural, call it a, someone painting, and I believe it's, you know, kinda to reflect the, their beer sign but with the word either food or eat, but I'll get those details tomorrow and it'll certainly be presented in November for a vote. I do caution, I don't know on the suggestion of the board, I think I heard the word a certified mural painter, I don't know if that exists. So I don't know, you know, we're talking a licensed painter or, or what, but we'll get the artwork and have it submitted.
I, I think, I think the, it was more leaning towards a professional painter or painting company rather than the, than the property owner.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's the property owner doing the painting, but we'll, we'll confirm that all and present it in November.
This is where tell, do we need a motion to table this until additional information is received?
I, I think that would be appropriate.
Frisbee, I'll make the motion, we table this until the November meeting or till the information is received as requested.
Member Newman, I will support.
Schenkel? I think that was a yes.
Great.
Manchester?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Future?
Yes.
Wortella?
Yes.
And Frisbee?
Yes.
Our third one that was brought to a discussion, it's not on the agenda, but I wanted to add it to the agenda. It was on one, let's see, on one oh five South Kalamazoo Avenue. It's the Mezzanine Play Cafe. They installed a sign on the front on Washington, is it? No, on Kalamazoo Avenue. The signage, evidently, they've gotten their permits for the sign. The landowner has the application signed or. The landowner a lot, uh, has the um, application sign or okay from Bart's banners for them to put the sign on. So they follow that criteria. Of the uh. Of the property owner. Um, they've paid in half. I need another payment copy of the eighteen hundred and ninety-two dollars that is still due. Um, their criteria all falls into this grant. In the past, we have granted. Uh, applicants. Uh, when, when work has been done and we've gone back and granted it. One, for an example, was. Uh, windfall. When their sidewalk was denied, but they made a patio out of it and we granted it to them eight months later. When we reopened the. Uh. Grant process again, because we had money left over for the spring grant. And their front sidewalk that they put in was you, is used as a patio. That's just an example of the one that was brought up after the grant process was over. And their, their one was denied, but it was reapplied and, and, and approved and the money's allocated to them. Um. Is there any, do we need discussion on this?
Uh, we would need a, a motion to discuss. Jim, could?
Yeah, I. Staff hasn't reviewed this at all. Um. We did have a policy in place that we would get these things twenty-one days in advance to be able to review. Um. I, and you know, this is just coming up, so I feel comfortable if this is tabled as well and the chair can table it. Uh, without a motion or vote. Um, and that we present them both and uh we'll ensure that uh we present it uh in uh the November meeting.
Yeah, I think I'll move forward with that recommendation uh once uh staff has had sufficient time to review as well as the DDA Subcommittee. So I'd like to table that for the November meeting. Thank you, Manager Mallory.
Um, have you received that? Uh, email that I sent you though, Jim, at the. On your, on your, uh, on, on this application?
Um, and when, when was it sent?
Um, I believe Saturday.
Um, I probably received it on Saturday, but I was on vacation in another state.
Did the rest of this board receive that, that I, that email that I sent out?
I did, John.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
This is Shankle, I did.
Uh, I, Member Newman, I did as well.
Manchester, I did too.
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm fine with that. I was just uh, it was brought to my attention and I wanted to uh bring it up to this board. Uh, we have no problems waiting or moving it to November's after the twenty, after the twenty-one days of uh. Permission to the village. And that's all I am.
Great, thank you. Um. Thanks, John. I think we, I, again, I'm on my phone, so I don't have for parking lot signage and wayfinding.
Yeah, I can switch uh back to a shared screen if. People need, this is just a uh. Um. I was just gonna share again. This is just informing the board, uh, reference the signs. Uh, the first sign was up on North Kalamazoo Avenue. They were purchased at different times, but fallen in with what was presented during the budget process. Reference new sign weighing each wage and uh the parking lots um as well subsequent to that. That uh, the one on behind Main Street Pub, that was the total cost on the three signs that come out of those uh streetscape funds that was approved. Uh, through the budget process.
Manager Mallory, are you looking for any action on this or is this just uh a general information?
No, it's, I, I had given uh my word to the, to the board that um even though that this was. Approved within the budget process by this group and the council that we had always report back on any funds expended out of the two forty-eight uh DDA money. And that's just the report back that this was already approved. It was at dollar limits within the village manager's ability to spend and, and that's what occurred.
Great, thank you. Uh, Director Durkey, are you, are you with us? Are you able to provide an update on MCM? You are with us, you are on mute still.
Yep, he was, uh, Jim was unmuting me. I wasn't sure if he needed to or not. Um, it's just a, a brief update. Uh, I guess a copy of the plan arrived today, MCM. Um, the planning commission approved a site plan last year for a building addition. Um, that addition did not happen and I was contacted uh about a month or two ago by uh an architect working on behalf of them. And the uh addition has grown in size. It grew in size beyond what we could administratively approve, which is a five percent change to floor area. So um, soon uh I'll digest what's in there. Make sure we have all the supplementary docs like the stormwater calculations and everything you guys need. Um, just a heads up that that site plan, um, you guys should get a. Get a notice that that's gonna be distributed soon, so you can review it in time for the November meeting. So no real significant change, just the building is bigger and more parking. Just a heads up that that's coming in case there was any confusion why you're reviewing a very similar plan, but. Um, when you see it, you'll see it's grown in size. So that's pretty much it. Just wanted to give you guys a heads up that there will, there will be a site plan for the November meeting.
Great, thank you. Okay, we will move on to the next agenda item, public comments. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment?
Um, right now, uh, Jackie Coney is on the call, so I'll ask Jackie if she does wish to make comments.
Hi, yes. Uh, I just wanted to tell all you guys that um it was a couple of years ago that you uh approved a variance for my husband, John Kern and me. Um, for our house at five fifteen South Main. And many of you had asked, oh, I forgot to give you my address, two thirty-four West Highway Street. Um, and many of you have been asking how things are going and well, I just wanted to let you know that we got our certificate of occupancy last week and uh just wanted to thank you for um. Understanding and helping us with that variance and uh, yeah, when, whenever you're in the hood, stop on by and we'd love to show it around, although we haven't moved in yet, so thank you.
Great, thank you, Jackie. It is certainly is uh interesting and very cool looking house.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to member comments. I'm not gonna go down the line, but if anybody has any qu- uh comments that they would like to share, uh, please announce your name and uh share your comments.
Uh, Frisbee, I can't help it. Um. Jackie, how the, the landscape looks fabulous. Uh, I've got comments over that. Have you seen the new house down there and the landscaping y'all did? So beautiful job. Um, second is to, Member Newman had said earlier, I think we need to get a little clarity on. On the uh DDA and the planning commission, if there is any need to close meeting, open meeting. Or if we can do it all as the same. I believe it's the latter, but. If, if we could get some clarity on that at, at the next meeting, Jim, thank you.
I've, I've already sent an email to Andrew Horn. Um. I'm confident that it's just one of those learning things. The planning commission does do the DDA business. It's not. But we'll get clarification from the, the attorney. It's not two separate entities. Is my understanding, but we'll clarify it and I'll have Andrew do a summary for the, for the group.
Any other member comments? Uh, in addition to what uh Member Frisbee mentioned about the separate meetings, uh, Jim, I think we can also have. Question about the uh as a line item in our agendas. And then. Uh, I do, I do, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm, I, I'm getting it really broken from your phone, so I apologize, but that is contained within the email I sent and I have you CC'd on it.
Great. Uh, I hope everyone can hear me. Um, I know that with the downtown facade grant. Um, in my, in my former life in, in another city uh that became a Michigan Main Street community, there. There was a style guide developed for downtown businesses that would be period correct to the time that the, the downtown was developed. Um, so I, I'd like to uh look into that a little bit further with our um, our master plan and see if there's anything that speaks to that directly for. Uh, keeping. Uh, some consistency in downtown businesses so that uh, there, there's not um. You know, uh. Kind of rogue businesses that are, are. Protecting or extracting from kind of period correct, uh, consider looking into as well. Comments. Hearing none, I will adjourn this meeting at seven fifty-nine.
Thank you.
Have a good.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.